On the 2024 CZMP rezoning request within the 3rd district. My name is Nancy Hafford. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and we will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for our members of the board that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. We ask for your assistance and cooperation and respect throughout this hearing. The speakers that have signed up will be given a total of two minutes to present their position on any issues in the 3rd district. If you wish to speak and have not signed up, please do so immediately. Registration will close at 6:15 PM. Staff from the Department of Planning will call on speakers from the list. Speakers, you will be promoted to panelist at that time in the event you would like to turn on your video. When we call your name, please remember to unmute yourselves. Please begin by clearly stating your name, your organization, the issue number, as well as your position on that issue. The Planning Board will utilize a virtual electronic timer for the speakers. This will give the speakers, this will give the speakers, able to speakers to utilize their two minutes efficiently and assure and ensure we have time for all interested parties to address the Planning Board. Everyone registered will be given an opportunity to speak. However, the Planning Board reserves the right to further limit repetition comments and presentations in lieu of or in addition to your written testimony. Written comments may be submitted in hard copy to the Planning Board via the Planning Department. Please address materials and letters to the Planning Board and mail or drop them off to Baltimore County Planning Department, CZMP 2024 in care of the Planning Board, the Jefferson Building, 105 West Chesapeake Avenue, Suite 101, Towson, Maryland, 21204. Please make sure the CZMP issue number is clearly identified with any comments. Additional instructions can be found on the CZMP hub. Following the completion of our seven hearings in February, the Planning Board will review the issues and relevant information and make our recommendations to the County Council. The Planning Board's schedule is posted on the Department of Planning's website. The County Council will then hold their own public hearing in June and are required by code to vote on the new CZMP maps before September 16th, 2024. We thank you for your attendance, cooperation, and respect. Again, remember to please state your name, your organization, the issue number, as well as your precise position on that issue. Thank you, and Planning Board members, please mute yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Ms. Renee Wilson. Renee, you're unmuted.
Hello, my name is Renee Wilson. I am the owner of the 21159 Old York Road property and the Farmyard zoning issue 3-0048, and I am opposed to the rezoning request. My name is Renee. I am the owner of the farm located at 21159 Old York Road, which is referenced in this issue. I am opposed to the rezoning requests because it would take 8.7 of my 40 acres from agriculture and change it to commercial zoning. At the Farmyard, we're dedicated to educating people of all ages and demographics about farming. This is why more than 60 people plan to attend in person tonight. Some of them are with me now. There is a petition that has more than 1,800 signatures, and I'm aware of at least eight letters that have been sent to Councilman Koch's office. I wanted to show you those that are sitting behind me. I'd like to thank the Councilman for his quick reply in January. Megan Benjamin and Baltimore County's Ag Business Specialist Jess Armocost, who diligently responded and gave me their time. For those who are listening and haven't had a chance to see it, I would like to reiterate a few pieces from the letter I sent to the Planning Board. I did not submit this request, and I am fully against it. It was submitted by someone that was outside of our district. I never received any county correspondence until a sign was posted at the end of my driveway at the end of February, or January, excuse me. Although the application says my property is adjacent to I-83 interchange, it is also adjacent to 180 acres of RC2 farmland. I am the fourth generation in my family to have farmed there. I understand this is not typical, but how can someone submit a zoning request without permission from the property owner? Who and what has driven someone outside of my district to submit this request? And what will the county do to keep this from happening to others? The community members I mentioned earlier came from, care about the future of farmers in Baltimore County and wants to develop a relationship with farmers like me. Agriculture is Maryland's number one commercial industry, and my farm is already correctly zoned as RC2, and it should stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, we have Carolyn Black Soder.
Ms. Soder.
There we go. My name is Carolyn Black Sotier. My issue number is 3-012. My husband, Michael Sotier, and I live at Silo Hill, a 100-acre farm located in northern Baltimore County. It is our hope to have our son, Ramsey Sotier, and his family live on and help maintain the farm. Therefore, we are requesting changing the zoning on 3.5 acres from RC2 to RC5, which will allow for one density unit and the ability to build Ramsey and Molly's house. This small parcel has virtually no impact on the farm's agricultural potential or output. The proposed site is located at the very edges of the field. During last summer, Michael and I met individually with a number of our neighbors, followed by a neighborhood-wide meeting with approximately 25 attendees. The general consensus was one of support for our proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next, we have Ryan O'Darty.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan O'Darty, and I'm Senior Vice President, External Affairs for Mercy Medical Center, and I'm also a Baltimore County resident. I'm speaking in favor of issue number 3-014. This issue is about Stella Maris, which is our skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility in Timonium. Stella is a subsidiary of Mercy, so that's why we're here today testifying. The property has about just over 31 acres, and it's currently zoned RC4. And under this current zoning classifications, none of the existing uses would be permitted because it's a legal non-conforming use at this time. The property is part of a broader campus of over 100 acres, improved with a series of medical, nursing care, and residential uses, including Stella Maris and Mercy Bridge, which is an assisted living and senior living development. What we're doing here is we're proposing that to rezone the land that encompasses Stella Maris to a zoning classification that actually permits the use of what we're doing every day on the property. And I just want to make clear to the community, this filing is not for the purpose of any expansion or development other than the existing Stella Maris facility to allow us the flexibilities. You know, it's a, it's a changing landscape and industry, and we want to be able to respond to the citizens of the county by providing, you know, cutting-edge senior services. So, so this will allow us to continue to have flexibility without having to go back to the county every time because it's a non-conforming use. That concludes my testimony. I think, I thank everybody on the board, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have David Palmer.
Good evening. My name is David Palmer, and I am the President of the Greater Jacksonville Association, a community organization with members residing throughout the greater Jacksonville area and portions of Baltimore. And today I speak to inform you of our objection to five petitions under issues 3-019, 3-020, 3-021, 3-039, and 3-013, all seek upzoning to commercial designations. For decades, the residents of Jacksonville, with the assistance of the county government, have maintained a rural village atmosphere in its limited rural commercial center located at and around the Four Corners intersection. The concept of limiting commercial zoning in this area has been incorporated into the Jacksonville Community Plan, a document requested by and with substantial input from the Department of Planning, and which has been adopted by the County Council for inclusion into the master plan. An update of that plan is presently underway and will be completed shortly with the significant assistance of the Department of Planning. This plan specifically opposes an increase in commercial zoning from ROA and inferentially RO and RC5 designations in this rural commercial center. Section 4.8 of the plan states in part, quote, "The rezoning of ROA parcels to a business classification is not consistent with this plan and will not be supported. It is definitely not the intent of this plan that ROA zone properties later be converted to a higher business classification." Now, for the past 20 years, the only significant agreement upzona parcel was from the Klein Family Market, talking about this commercial area, which had a recognized need and widespread community support and was subject to an extensive list of restrictive covenants which are binding for 40 years. There is no such substantial need for additional commercial business in this area at this time. Finally, the owner.
Thank you, Sue.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Is there any way we could get those issues again? There was a lot of issues I couldn't get them written down.
There are. Yeah, that's why I ran a little long. Issues 3-019, 3-020, 3-021, 3-039, and 3-013. I apologize for talking fast, but I was trying to cover five issues in two minutes.
Thank you, sir. If you want to submit anything to the Planning Department, we'd be happy to take a look at it.
Thank you. We did submit written testimony with us this afternoon. We gave it to Taylor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Wes Guckert.
Thank you. For the, for the record, my name is Wes Guckert. I'm a President of the Traffic Group Incorporated. We're here for issue number 3-17. I'm a professional transportation planner, been practicing as such for over 50 years. Our firm has undertaken thousands of traffic studies over the last five decades and hundreds of studies in Baltimore County. A real issue here is the intersection of York and Ridgely Road. It's operating at a level of service C. An F level of service was never real or actual. The county does not believe it's failing. The state does not believe it's failing, and our analysis shows it's not failing. Quite frankly, the redevelopment of Lutherville Station will actually generate less traffic than could be generated if the property were completely reoccupied at its current zoning and current use. And by that, I mean if the existing buildings were reoccupied with opposite retail uses as currently zoned, the property would generate more traffic than what is proposed as transit-oriented development. In fact, as proposed, it will generate 35% fewer peak hour trips. As of today, according to the county and the state, the entire York Road corridor is operating at a level of service D or better. There are no failing intersections from Lutherville to Cockeysville. Between 2019 and 2022, pre-COVID, post-COVID, according to the state, average daily traffic in York Road, down 5% south of Seminary. Same thing, down 9.8% near the fairgrounds. The State Highway Administration is not suggesting a single road improvement in the corridor because it's simply not needed. The state has found level of service C as early as three months ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Taylor, next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Steve Plano.
Mr. Plano.
Yes, hello. My name is Steve Plano, and I speak today, wait a minute, in support of issue 3-017, Lutherville Station. Our coalition of the Friends of Old Lutherville and Friends of Roll and Run seeks solutions to housing, economic vitality, and the environment in Lutherville. We're neighbors who've lived here 30-plus years with expertise in planning, zoning, transportation, landscape architecture, history, and real estate. We shared our expertise on the Lutherville Community Association. We're part of the original zoning committee when Lutherville Station was introduced. Because this project can't be accomplished under current zoning, the owner proposed a PUD, P U D, with restrictive covenant. Councilman Koch clearly stated this was in the best interest of Lutherville and sponsored a series of meetings with LCA, GTCC, and Austin negotiated a solution. Unfortunately, LCA, bolstered by their offspring, No Apartments, No Compromise, and GTCC refused to negotiate in good faith, and Mr. Koch has now backtracked. We support mixed use with apartments here because redevelopment is a given. We want a project that's an asset to Lutherville, not just another run-of-the-mill commercial or big box. Housing prices exceed what most can afford, and creative solutions are needed. This location, served by transit, adjacent to commercial services, will reduce motor vehicle trips for future residents. Environmental conditions will improve because the project will meet current regulations on stormwater landscaping and green buildings. The current BL zoning allows uses that we find not suitable, such as nightclubs, big box, gas stations, convenience stores, and drive-through fast food. The covenant would preemptively deny these. Address adequacy of public services, cap the number of housing units and bedrooms, include open space and community amenities with height limits and building aesthetics, and provide continued community input into issues such as sewer capacity and traffic. We ask the CCC zoning overlay be granted, as per the draft restrictive covenant Mr. Koch requested and now has a duty to advance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Plano. Next speaker, Ms. Taylor.
Next up, we have Steve Gore.
Mr. Gore.
Good evening. My name's Steve Gore. I'm the Vice President of Baltimore County Farm Bureau, speaking on issue 3-048, and our position is that we strongly oppose. Baltimore County Farm Bureau would like to inform you that the rezoning request for 21159 Old York Road, property known as the Farmyard, was done without the knowledge and consent of the property owner. Neighbors and others in the community received letters informing them of the impending zoning change. However, the landowner received no such letter nor proper notification. The proposed zoning would change the property from RC2 to a BMCR. The landowner is currently running an agricultural business on the land and intends to continue to do so. Any change to the zoning potentially has a negative impact on existing agricultural use and the surrounding community. Within the past two years, the community has rallied behind this farm to keep it within their community. Any changes to the zoning will bring unwanted changes to the land and the community living on and around it. Baltimore County Farm Bureau must insist that the proposed zoning change be given an unfavorable recommendation to the County Council. As a generalization, the County Farm Bureau does not support the process of rezoning ag land into commercial zoning. Outside parties making zoning change requests is an unjust system that has the potential to negatively impact property owners' livelihoods and should stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Taylor, next speaker.
Next up, we have Emily Brown.
Ms. Brown.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to support zoning change issue 3-017. For months, I've researched facts and figures and listened to the status quo, but not until I learned about this spinach pie restaurant have I found something that embodies all our fears and explains why I've come to support this change from commercial to residential. Spinach Pie was a place I always wondered about but never ventured into. For someone like me, the stark austere setting gave me anxiety. It was at the corner of Front Street and Seminary and the Lutherville side of the train tracks, but my neighbor lived there near it before having grandchildren. He frequented the place sometimes daily. He says everyone would go in there because it was the place to go. And eventually, the spinach pie place closed down. Without the green and white stripes sign, its setting appears more desolate. I drive by it sometimes daily. What was once a cute neighborhood establishment now creates in me a sense of loneliness and despair. Economist Thomas Malthus said people don't want to increase their standards, they just want more. In fact, our rising population numbers are proving Malthus' theory true. According to the US Census, Baltimore County population was 270,000 in 1950, and in 2020 it was logged at 854,000. To me, the current development at Lutherville Station is raising my standard of living. The developer has maintained the property well so far, and he now owns the adjacent abandoned office space that is up for the rezoning. Leaving it commercial would bring the same issues as I have, as we have now. Not one there at night, no one there at night, few lights, and indifference towards increasing nature and an increase of daily visitors who have no real investment in the space. The developer has a listening, a history of listening to others and is proposing a space that seems to be a nice compromise to the modern and historic aspects of Lutherville. We already have an historic center in the fairgrounds. Let's create a modern center that preserves the past and leads us to the future with green space, smart living, and new pathways. Let us all be inspired.
Next up, we have Kenny. Next, we have Kenny Carter.
Yes, hi. My name is Kenny Carter, and I am a Baltimore County resident in District 3. I am for the issue number 3-17, Lutherville Station redevelopment. I wanted to state that my family owns and operates a service business that is adjacent to the property within 1,500 feet of the business. We started this business almost a year ago, and our business experiences same type of no-compromise opposition that Lutherville Station redevelopment is currently experiencing from the same types of neighborhood associations. It's in my view that the majority of our neighbors and clients who reside within the bounds of the district, as well as the Lutherville community, do support a vibrant mixed-use town center project like Lutherville Station. I think as a community, we need to make better decisions about the long term, which includes sustainable development, development near transit options, and development that allows people to live, work, and play in their communities. Think the tractors of this project are few but loud. I'm here to say that there are members of the community that do want to see this property rezoned for mixed-use development so we can breathe more life into the community. I yield back my time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think you're muted, but I get what you're trying to say. Next up, we have David Frederick.
Yes, good. Good evening. My testimony is for issue 3-017, and I'm also part of the Friends of Old Lutherville and Friends of Roll and Run group that Steve Plano spoke to earlier, and I wanted to just emphasize a couple of his points a little bit further. But remind you that we're a group of Lutherville community neighbors who have lived here for 30-plus years, and we've participated in a number of activities within the community, and we also possess specific expertise in land planning and zoning, real estate development. We are in, again, to reiterate, for the zoning, rezoning of CCC for this, for the Lutherville Station property, and would like to have it move forward. The specific issues with site development is, I'd like to remind everyone, is that there is no stormwater management on this property as it stands today, none. There's 13 acres of asphalt and concrete. All of that will be enhanced and rebuilt, and stormwater management will be installed, all new sewer, all new pipes, all of that. In addition, there'll be more open space in the current, in the plan that the owner has. The other point I want to make is that the development team is a very strong, very well-known, successful group of folks. The Kinsley family and Mark Rembaum of the Schreber family all have a tremendous reputation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Pam Burke.
Ms. Burke.
Pam, you're unmuted.
Ms. Burke.
There you go. Hi, my name is Pam Burke, and I am the current president of.
Pam, do you have two devices on?
I do.
Need one, turn one off, please.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Burke, and I am the current president of Orchard Hills Community Association, speaking today opposing issue 3-024. As president on behalf of the Board of Directors of Orchard Hills, we oppose the change of 2 Cave and Drive within our community boundaries and 1202 York Road with two sides of the property adjacent to our community to be rezoned as BL. I handed over 20 copies of the detailed letter to the Planning Board last Friday. This letter explains our concerns and the reasons why zoning of RO is more appropriate for businesses next to established communities like Orchard Hills. RO provides a suitable transition to the residential community. Had this meeting been in person, you would be able to see the community members attending with me who oppose the issue. We are also very concerned with the number of requests to change to CCC multi-use along the York Road corridor between the Beltway and Cockeysville. The schools and major roadways in our community are already overcrowded. Current residents in our community should not have to experience additionally overcrowded schools, congested roadways, drainage problems, or overburdened sewer systems because of the influx of additional residents these developments would create. The infrastructure of the current communities must be able to support large increases of residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Stephanie Bobluch.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Bobluch. I am a resident of Lutherville, and I'm also a member of the Orchard Hills Community Association. I'm currently the recording secretary, and I'm speaking on issue 3-024, for which we are opposed. Orchard Hills opposes the request to change from the current zoning to BL. We are a residential community with an active community association. We do not want businesses further encroaching into our community. A change to BL could at any time have a detrimental effect on the community, and BL allows for many undesirable businesses not suitable for a residential community. The properties referred to are 1,200 and 1202 York Road. However, one does not even have access to York Road from, with a driveway or anything. We know the neighborhood would be negatively impacted with increased traffic utilizing Cave and Drive to exit through the community. Another concern is the strain a BL business could have on the existing infrastructure. There are numerous office spaces available along York Road, the corridor from Towson to Cockeysville. It is our hope that you preserve our residential community, which was established 70 years ago and now has 437 homes enjoying life in Orchard Hills. Thank you for your time and consideration, and again, we are opposing issue 3-024.
Thank you, Ms. Bobluch. The next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Tracy Bowden. Tracy, I don't see that you have a microphone. If you're on. If you're on with a phone number, if you could please send that to me in the chat so I can unmute it. We will circle back. We'll circle back to Tracy. Next up, we have Sandy Stelges.
Hi, I'm Sandy Stelges, Thornton Mill Road resident for twenty-one years, four hundred feet straight down from the property. I impetition to be rezoned. I oppose issue three zero zero two. My utmost concern is erosion and water runoff into the stream that feeds into the Western Run that often floods our road, which flows into the Lock Raven Reservoir, the primary source of water for 1.5 million people. The MSL listing from which, from which Woodhome Farms purchased lots, features floodplain, Western Run River, ten acre meadow. Zoning may permit two additional lots. This property provides utmost, the ultimate seclusion and rural living access by shared driveway easement, end quote. Woodhome Farms is seeking for zoning change that would allow up to five houses per acre, and just the ten acre meadow could be as many as fifty homes. We understand the county would profit from building more houses, but there are many regulations for development that contains a stream and a steep slope that should be protected from widespread development, and we expect you to uphold those regulations. New development will change the character of our community and will have a detrimental impact. It was listed as serene. It was purchased as serene, and it should remain serene. In order to carefully evaluate this property, it is your responsibility to visit our community. We expect you to share our concerns for the protection along the Western Run. You represent us. You represent the land, water, environment, and wildlife. I also petition on behalf of other year-round residents such as eagles, pilated woodpeckers, blue heron, whitetail deer, red-tailed fox, and black squirrels, just to mention a few that I enjoy for my yard. I invite you to join me there also. Please remember, we are not a city. We are serene and rural North Baltimore County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stelges. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Carrie Williams.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
She was on twice. Let's
She says here. She's in the chat.
Carrie, try now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Is there
Nope, you're all good.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Williams. I'm a resident of Thornton Mill Road.
Ms. Williams, you have two devices on. You have to turn one off.
I don't, I don't know how I own my computer on.
Check and see if you're in the WebX, if you have two WebX windows open.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry for that. Good evening. My name is Carrie Williams. I'm a resident of Thornton Mill Road, and I'm among the community of neighbors who are against the zone change request three dash zero zero two. On February second, I created a petition online at change.org against the zone change request, which now features two hundred and fifty-plus signatures of concerned Sparks residents. Additionally, I conducted a Google, Google survey for Thornton Mill Road residents garnering twenty-five responses from neighbors who unanimously oppose the zone change. Our concerns are centered around environmental impact and increased traffic. I will be submitting a document showcasing the petition, petitioner's comments, signatures, as well as the survey results, and I've just put a link to the petition in the chat as well. The Western Run watershed is an ecosystem that supports diverse wildlife and contributes significantly to local biodiversity. It belongs to the network of streams that comprise the Chesapeake Bay watershed, the largest in the U.S. and certainly one of the most productive on the planet. As a tributary of Lock Raven Reservoir, its protection ensures clean water for us and for future generations while also maintaining natural flood control mechanisms inherent in such landscapes. Developments like those permitted in proposed zone RC five will change the natural flow of the stormwater runoff in, in the watershed in both quality and quantity, namely the frequency and severity of flooding. When increasingly devastating summer storms like those that rip through Sparks every July clash with an increase in impervious surfaces due to irresponsible development, the resulting runoff causes flooding, pollution, and erosion of our waterways and destruction of wildlife habitats. You don't have to look hard to see that things are only getting warmer and wetter. We need decision-makers to start playing the long game. We need stakeholders to wake up to issues impacting the balance of the ecosystem. This zone change would set the precedent for irresponsible development throughout Sparks and open the floodgates to vulnerable residents on the valley floor along Thornton Mill Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Jed Jenny.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Yeah, actually Carrie's husband, and I just wanted to reiterate some of the points she made and speak up for some of the residents that couldn't make it this evening. We had, we're actually also dealing with a power outage on Thornton Mill Road tonight, so that made things even more challenging to be here tonight. We're here thanks to a generator. Anyways, all of the residents, again, you know, were unanimous in the over two hundred and fifty residents here that oppose issue three dash zero zero two. And the primary reasons there are, again, the environmental concerns and really the location of this, this, this lot is right dead heart in one of the most sensitive parts of the watershed protected area, which was established for a reason, and I don't, really can't understand, you know, the idea of going against undoing this zoning for the benefit of a development, out-of-state development at that. The other primary concern is Thornton Mill Road itself is, is quite challenging to navigate. As it's winding, there's not even a dividing line down the center of the road. There's no shoulder. It presents a number of challenges as it is currently, and the development, the proposed plan would have put a bridge in the blind turn, which would make it even more, even less safe for residents, and we just, you know, think that this is a really poorly, poor, poor plan all the, all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenny. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Chris Hauck.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Chris Hauck. I'm owner of My Pet Store More in the York Road Shopping Center, which is adjacent to the property that's under consideration for issue three dash zero one seven. A lot has been said already, so I'll make it quick, but I fully support the rezoning of the site. Currently, it's a dilapidated vacant area, pretty much an empty mall with a couple of big box stores there. But just the, the rebuild of it, building it into a more of a community center. It's not going to affect traffic. It's going to build up and help small businesses. Of course, they're not bringing in any, any big box stores or main stores. Our business itself is built around the community. We enjoy having our, our neighborhood customers come in that we know, and we believe that this new development will just enhance that. It'll be perfect for customers just to walk down, go to local shops, and support the community. It's also going to generate a good amount for the Baltimore economy as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauck. Next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we have Marty Franklin Moten, but I do not see them in the attendees list, so Marty, if I missed you, please send me a chat, and I will promote you next. Next up, we have Clay Goodyear. And Clay, you're able to unmute now.
Thank you, Taylor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Clay Goodyear. I'm speaking on behalf of the opposition of issue three dash zero four two and in support of issue three dash zero five zero. I'm asking that the zoning, the zoning remain the same on the property. I'm the owner of the parcel in question, along with my business partner. We purchased the property in 2017 with the goal of subdividing the property into a reasonable number of lots to live on personally with our families. We, we are currently zoned RC five, which will allow us a density of ten lots on the twenty-one acre site. We have proposed a design that limits the development to only six lots. All the adjacent properties are also zoned RC five, and the urban rural demarcation line is less than two hundred feet from our property. Our adjacent neighbors to the north who are also zoned RC five have put in the request to downzone us to RC eight, which is issue three dash zero four two, which would only allow us to have one lot. The closest property that's zoned RC eight is over two miles away, and beyond that, the closest RC eight zoning is north of Shawan Road or surrounding Lock Raven Reservoir. Over the past six and a half years of ownership, we have processed development plans through Baltimore County and completed our hearing officer's hearing. The planning board already voted unanimously in favor of our development when we presented to them in two thousand, in 2023. In summary, the RC five zoning on our property has been in place for decades. We feel that our below-density design is in keeping with the surrounding area, and we believe that our neighbors are attempting to weaponize the CZMP in this case. We strongly believe that the RC five zoning that is currently in place for the property is the appropriate zoning and should not be changed.
Thank you, Mr. Goodyear. Next speaker.
Thank you, and now we are going to go back to Tracy Bowden.
Ms. Bowden?
Tracy, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. It's issue number three dash zero two four. My name is Dr. Tracy Bowden, and I'm here speaking in support of issue three dash oh two four. This issue covers two properties that I own, which both front on the very busy stretch of York Road between six ninety-five and Seminary Avenue in Lutherville. The properties are currently zoned RO and DR five point five, and I'm requesting that they be rezoned to BL to facilitate redevelopment for acceptable commercial use on the property. I purchased these properties in 2021, and they have been used, or maybe I should say attempted to be used for residential purposes since that, that time, and primarily for residential use prior to my ownership, but they were abandoned homes. The homes are in various states of disrepair, and they simply are not marketable for quality tenants who can be good neighbors to the community that lies behind them. Unfortunately, I've determined that if I were to rehabilitate these homes for residential use, they simply would not be able to get the rent necessary to offset any type of rehabilitation cost. Redevelopment of the two properties together for a single modest in size commercial use is really the only viable, viable option on this property. Based upon my study of the market as well as engagement with the community, I'm confident that I would be able to redevelop and to rent to commercial users.
Are you there, sir? Seems like we lost him, Taylor.
It looks like we did. If he joins back on, it looks like he completely dropped the call. If he joins back on, we'll let him finish. But for now, we will move on. Next up, we have Tim RuPaul. And we were asked to give an update as to where we are number-wise. Tim is Speaker twenty.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tim RuPaul. And I am going to direct you to, I have something going on here. You're in the back.
Are you logged on twice, Mr. RuPaul?
I don't think so, but yes.
You want to try to continue?
Okay. Is it better? Let me try again. I apologize.
I think we can hear you, Mr. RuPaul. I think we lost him, Ms. Kinsley.
I think we did as well. Okay, we will circle back to him. Next up, next up, we have Ty Young.
Ty Young?
Ty, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Silly question. I was an engineer for AT&T for thirty years. I used to ask that question all the time. Anyway, thank you. I'm a Sparks resident. I'm also a Sparks Glenco Community Planning Council board member, but I'm here as a resident against three dash zero zero two. Carrie Williams and her husband, I think, detailed much of the concern eloquently. For me, I'm familiar with this property, and the, the topography is troubling for the density they're asking for. You've got a plateau with maybe eight acres, maybe ten, and then you've got a precipitous drop down to two tributaries, spring-fed tributaries, and the floodplain itself for Western Run. And it's just problematic. Nothing you, nothing you're going to do from a water control pro aspect is really going to fully address everything that's going to happen, and the downstream effect is going to be tough. The second piece of the puzzle is contiguous forest, something that multiple county has espoused, working toward and trying to provide corridors for animal movement, safe animal movement. And this particular piece of, of property is part of that contiguous forest, and I'd hate to see it denuded for dense housing tracks. There are certainly other concerns, but those are the ones that are prominent for me. I thank you for your time. I certainly know how fun these things can be, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Alex Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alex Fisher. I'm a resident of the Pebble Creek community at the northeast corner of Timonium and Jennifer Roads. I'm president of the Pebble Creek Homeowners Association, and I'm here to speak to issue three dash oh five six on behalf of Pebble Creek residents. The Baltimore Country Club plans to build a one hundred thousand square foot Rackets facility at the northwest corner of Timonium and Jennifer Roads. The club's existing facilities were approved under a special exception granted by the county many years ago. So an amendment is required to proceed with the use that fundamentally changes the character of their land. Homes adjacent to the intersection of Jennifer and Timonium Roads number in the hundreds, racket facilities are notoriously disruptive to neighboring communities. Concerns include noise, especially that associated with pickleball that has brought lawsuits all over the United States, light pollution at nighttime, increased traffic that will only add to existing problems at Timonium and Jennifer Roads, destruction of nearly three acres of forest that will increase stormwater runoff and jeopardize water quality of a stream on the site. And then finally, septic and water supply availability, which are already challenged in the area and will be overwhelmed by the club's use of this new facility. Baltimore County over fifty years ago had the foresight to establish protections for its beautiful landscape. Resource conservation or RC zones were adopted to help preserve open space and forest resources for protection against urban sprawl. The Board of Pebble Creek Homeowners Association requests that the planning board and county council consider downzoning the property and prohibit the sports facility use at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Tracy Santoro.
Hi, thank you for your time. Go ahead. I am Tracy Santoro, and I would like to speak about zoning request three zero one three. I'm a resident of Jacksonville, Maryland, and am opposed to this request. One four two oh two Jarrettsville Pike is currently zoned RC five, like every family home surrounding it. I share a backyard with this property, and when my husband and I purchased our home fifteen years ago, we made sure this was a residential neighborhood for our children to grow up safely. There is a property map of Jacksonville, which shows Baltimore County approval of a line which separates commercial from residential zoning with a buffer of ROA in between. One four two oh two is well below this line and would be completely against our community plan to allow anyone to approve BL zoning that they are requesting. The request is to build an office building, and many other offices in the village of Jacksonville are only fifty percent rented, so we don't feel there's a need for more office space. We already have water, sewer, and many traffic issues, and we really don't want our neighborhood to look like York Road. What would then keep the owner from selling to a national chain to make more money? The change to BL would decrease home values and leave every surrounding family to look at bright lights, dumpsters, and strangers rather than our beautiful residential sanctuary. A home on this property is the original nineteen seventeen farmhouse to our entire neighborhood. It deserves to be maintained as it It deserves to be maintained, as it was before the new owner, and lived in as a home. So please don't vote to upzone three oh one three from RC five to BL and save our quaint neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santoro. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Martigen Werks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's Martin Werks, and I'm here to speak in opposition of issue number three dash zero one three. I'd like to reiterate some of the points that Tracy before me made. I reside directly next door to this property. We have concerns regarding how a business here will affect property values, potential for increase in traffic being in such close proximity to the elementary school across the street, and also the water supply. The aquifer is not very high yield, and several nearby residents have expressed concerns about how a commercial building might affect their water supply. And also to reiterate what Tracy mentioned, the petition for zoning change cites a need for office space in the community. However, there are four other addresses in the immediate area on the docket requesting to be rezoned from ROA to BL because they're only being leased at a rate of 50% or less. So we are completely opposed to the expansion of business in Jacksonville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Samantha Werks.
Hi, thank you so much. I am speaking on CZMP three zero one three. The previous speaker was my husband, so I'm going to reiterate everything that him and Tracy also spoke about. The other pieces that I do want to call out, so this, this small home that is on the property is directly diagonal to the tennis courts of Jacksonville Elementary. So I do want to speak on behalf of the parents of Jacksonville who are dropping off their children, walking their children across the street to get to Jacksonville for, for parent pickup, parent drop off, and the current traffic situation on Jarrettsville Pike. So today, the traffic situation at Four Corners, you know, the, the rush hour traffic is much higher, obviously, than midday. So, you know, you have traffic coming to and from Bel Air Towson, Hunt Valley to Jarrettsville, and this property sits directly on Jarrettsville Pike. So there's going to be increased traffic during school hours, safety issues with the increased traffic for parent pickup and drop off and school events, additional noise. I want to reiterate any, if this zoning does occur, the property could be resold, and, you know, that we don't know what could actually end up being on the property. I know that the current owner is requesting an office building, which we do not see the need for increased office space with the current office space also requesting to be upzoned to business commercial because they do not have the renters that are renting the current office space today. So we're also concerned about the surrounding property values for the homes around this property, including Robcast and the other community members that are right down the street from the property. So we are requesting the county to oppose and decline this specific request to go to business commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Werks. Thank you. Next speaker, Taylor.
Next up, we have Josh Sharon.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Josh Sharon, and I'm a registered professional engineer in principle with Morrison Ritchie Associates. My expertise in stormwater management. I'm here this evening in support of CZMP issue three dash zero one seven to assist in the redevelopment of the existing shopping center known as Lutherville Station. As the board understands, and for those attending this evening, stormwater management is a practice of controlling stormwater to minimize its impact on the environment and infrastructure. When it comes to redevelopment of an existing shopping center, incorporating effective stormwater management can bring several benefits, particularly in water quality for the environment. I want to share four points on how stormwater management can benefit with the redevelopment of Lutherville Station Shopping Center. Number one, water quality improvement. Implementing stormwater management techniques such as buyer retention areas, permeable pavements, and modular wetlands can help to remove pollutants and sediments from stormwater runoff. This will lead to improved water quality in nearby water bodies such as streams, rivers, lakes, and benefiting the local ecosystem and reducing the impact development on water systems. Point number two, environmental sustainability. Proper stormwater management techniques contribute to the overall environmental sustainability of the redevelopment project. By minimizing the impact of stormwater runoff, the center can demonstrate a commitment to environmental stewardship, enhancing the appeal to environmentally conscious consumers, neighbors, and other stakeholders like yourselves. Three, mitigation of flooding and erosion. Stormwater practices reduce the risk of flooding and erosion, which is beneficial in urban areas. Four, improve aesthetics and amenities. Incorporating green infrastructure and stormwater management features can enhance the aesthetics of a shopping center surroundings, including adding natural and native landscaping for the enjoyment of customers. In summary, implementing effective stormwater strategy into the redevelopment of the shopping center will lead to numerous benefits. I urge the board tonight to support this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Susan Bakich. Susan, you're unmuted.
Ms. Bakich.
Okay, we can come back to her. Oh.
Ms. Bakich.
Susan just messaged that she's here. Susan, can you hear us? Is your microphone working?
Can't hear, Ms. Bensley. It's her system, power outage.
Okay, we will come back to you. Okay, next up, we have Martin Herman. And Martin, you're unmuted.
Yes, hi, Martin Herman. I'm here in support of issue zero zero three dash zero zero one, which is five four one one and five four one five Arcadia Avenue Upper Co., and I'm asking for the support for the change in residential zoning to BMCR. For over 60 years, the property has been used in heavy commercial use as a volunteer fire company with sirens and trucks and other equipment 24/7/365. My property is listed by the state as commercial and is taxed as commercial, is charged BGE Utilities as commercial, and is currently zoned residential. I have many letters of support of neighboring homes that support my request, and I'm in turn asking for support from the county in this process to change the zoning from residential to BMCR. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That issue again.
Zero zero three dash zero zero one.
Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Next up, we're going to circle back to Tim RuPaul, who got kicked off earlier.
Hi, I hope we're back and all right. I apologize. My name's Tim RuPaul, and I am a community District Three resident living in Delaney Valley Improvement Association area just north of the Beltway. So I'm going to focus you down to where Hever Plaza is and the Seminary Galleria. We have two issues that our community is unanimously almost against, the board is unanimously against. Issue three dash zero three oh is requested by the Seminary Galleria to change two and a half acres of BL to business major CCC overlay. Their plans are to put in 300 apartments and a back parking lot next to the fire museum behind the church. We oppose this. The public facilities are inadequate, the schools are overcrowded, 118% at Hampton Elementary School, there's traffic congestion, you heard from Mr. Guckert earlier, almost all the intersections along York Road. Also, the seminary galleria has a long history of insufficient parking, so we don't know how they can really do this. The BM is just unjustified. It's a major upzoning, and we're concerned that, are we putting development before infrastructure? I hear this all the time in the county council. What will we do about it? The second issue is three dash oh twenty three, very similar, 300 apartments behind the gala, not behind Hever Plaza. Similar issues. It's not walk around, it's not cycleable, there's no amenities, you can't walk to a grocery store, there's no green space, there's no parking areas to play, play in. So thanks, appreciate your time for listening to this, but we have 600 apartments planned just north of the Beltway.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley.
Next up, we are coming back to Susan Bakich. Susan, she's good.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sweet, sorry about that. Good evening, I'm speaking against issue three zero zero two regarding the rezoning of land located off Thornton Mill Road and Sparks by a developer from outside of Maryland. Thank you for giving me the time to speak this morning, hearing my neighbors' concerns. I believe we're all on the same page by summarizing our narrow two lane country road cannot, cannot handle the increased traffic, we have concerns for the wildlife, and especially that watershed, light pollution, privacy, et cetera. I think one thing that hasn't been covered is, well, the, the unknown, frankly, we have no idea what the developer wants to do. There's been no community input. We know they purchased the land that was labeled for one to two, possibly three homes with a right of way on Rocky Hill, and they want to change it. Change it to what? We don't really know. There's been no information in zoning requests, except summarized is, we don't like what we knowingly purchased. Our area cannot sustain heavy development, the road hugs a river on one side which is already eroding, a bolder hill on the other, that there is no access to public water or public sewer here to create any sort of development on here. I'm curious, does the EPA know anything about this? Because this is going over two active streams, the watershed, the river that goes into the watershed, and it basically needs to remodel a hill, a hill, a very steep hill, in order to get any sort of heavy construction traffic up to it to make a home, unless, again, they're doing the one or two homes with the access through Rocky Hill. The access they want is going through a blind corner on Thornton Mill Road, which, if you live here, you know you have to slow down or you will hit. Also, one last thing, our protected bald eagle does nest in that area, so please give thought to them and our migrating birds that also live here.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Sherry Dooling.
Hi, good eve. Hi, good evening. I'm Sherry Dooling with the farmyard, and I'm standing with Renee Wilson on issue three dash zero four eight. I respectfully request that you vote to keep Renee's property as agriculture by denying the request to rezon to commercial, which, as previously stated, was made without her consent. Upon my family's first visit to the farmyard, we were immediately drawn in due to Renee's love of agriculture and her passion for education. My daughter started horseback riding lessons, and now both of us are active in the farmyard's equine program. My family loves the chore chart experience, and weekly we help to feed and care for the animals. We participate in the livestock program, which provides hands-on education of rabbits, goats, and cows, and my daughter was then able to show at the Haverford Junior Farm Fair. While at the fair, with the foundation provided at the farmyard, my daughter, at six years old, gave a demonstration publicly speaking to a panel of judges. Renee's farm offers that and so much more to the community. Last year, the farmyard welcomed over 5,000 guests free of charge. Through field trips and school visits, Renee has reached over 3,000 schoolchildren. Renee offers farm schools, providing education on all aspects of agriculture. Additionally, Renee has partnered with a nonprofit organization, the Farmyard Friends Learning Center, which provides for more opportunities still centered around the principles of community, conservation, and education. Renee is one of the most caring, passionate, and transparent people I know. She has worked tirelessly to build up her farm, and she is really proud of what she has accomplished. I respectfully request that you vote to keep Renee's property as agriculture by denying the request to rezon to commercial. This rezon request was made by someone else and is one that Renee and the surrounding community does not support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Gordon Godat.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Gordon Godat. I'm a Baltimore County resident and a partner with JP Two Architects, and I'm speaking in favor of the rezoning in issue three dash zero one seven. I also authored the recent concept renderings that are being circulated, circulated online for the new Lutherville Station development. Over the last 30 years, I've had the pleasure of designing mixed use and TOD projects in communities across the globe. I started my own practice here in Maryland 17 years ago to bring that design expertise to better my own community. A forest tonight is a unique opportunity to not only create a project specific to Lutherville, but the opportunity to set a precedent for development for generations to come. We have the opportunity to work together to find a holistic solution for development in Baltimore County. The current building and site have aged out of their practical usefulness and no longer support the community or the environment. We have the opportunity to create something special. A new development should encompass the best of modern design and construction practices. It has the opportunity to support and encourage commitments made from the county and the state and to bolster ridership on the existing rail and bus lines already in place. It has the opportunity to support environmentally conscious design and to set a new standard for green building practices. It has the opportunity to blend new community and green spaces that support social activities with environmental site features that alleviate stormwater concerns and take burden off of roll and run. It has the opportunity to blend uses that have been proven to make communities more viable, walkable, and more desirable. We have the opportunity for adjacent communities to work with the development and design team to ensure planning and design objectives are met. We can work through the design, the infrastructure, the environmental needs, limiting impact of schools and roads, all of these are manageable, but let's not waste this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godat. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Claus Phillipson, who is Speaker number 32.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. I'm an architect in Baltimore and a transportation planner with about 48 years of experience, and I'm also speaking in favor of issue three oh seventeen. In 1990, I was designing the Lutherville Light Rail Station and replaced it there for its development potential. Even back then, the Northern Light Rail Coalition wanted to prevent the light rail and justations to stop the wrong element from coming in. In 2021, I was appointed to the county's housing group, work group, and I found, we found there that from the 136,000 acres that are inside the county hurdle line, only 15,000 acres, which is 11%, are zoned for multifamily units by right. The group recommended, among other things, that allowing, allowing multifamily developments in selected commercial and industrial zones should be happening, and issue three oh seventeen does exactly this by asking 13.6 acres at the Lutherville Station to be classified as CCC, allowing mixed use. This is in line with the 2010 master plan, which was drawn up in 2000 and showed already renderings what was called then originally Shopping Center as part of community enhancement. The site has languished all these years, thanks to no apartments, no compromise and such. These change, no change attitude causes enormous collateral damage. The county begins to stagnate, the county experiences a severe housing crunch, a glut of aging commercial corridors is obsolete and underperforming, infrastructure cannot be afforded without a good tax base.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Chris Mudd. Chris, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Christopher Mudd with Venable LLP here testifying in support of issue three dash zero two nine. I represent the owners of the subject property who were not able to make it here this evening to testify on their own. This is the location of the old Red Lion Hotel on Greenspring Drive in Timonium. The hotel had to close in 2019 because The hotel had to close in two thousand and nineteen because the operation of a hotel was no longer financially feasible. Since that time, the owner's been seeking to determine a viable alternative use at the property. As part of that effort, they filed this rezoning request, which on its face seeks no change in zoning, as it is currently zoned MLIM and likewise seeks the MLIM zone. This was done to get the property into the CZMP process to facilitate the potential for redevelopment under a different zone and to kick off discussions with community members about potential redevelopment. The property owner feels that the highest and best use of the property would be repurposing of the existing hotel building to convert into residential units, as opposed to a teardown and redevelopment of it. The owner has already had meetings with a local community association about the potential for residential redevelopment, and they look forward to continued discussions. Some in the community have requested the owner to evaluate the potential for limiting the residential use for an active adult product, and the owner is currently evaluating that for the market, for the marketability of that potential. We just wanted the board to be aware of these ongoing discussions and that we look forward to continuing them in hopes of reaching a covenant agreement that can demonstrate community support for an appropriate residential redevelopment. And with the remaining time, I just wanted to also briefly mention that I'm working with the owners of the properties that are the subject of issues three dash zero one nine, zero two zero, and zero two one in Jacksonville, and I'm testifying in support of those. The owners were likewise not able to attend, and they will be submitting written testimony which explains their efforts to engage with the community, and they will continue these efforts going forward. They're aware of concerns with the Greater Jacksonville Community Association, and they look forward to continued discussions with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next up, we have Robert Brando.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Chairman and board members. I'm calling, I'm speaking in reference to zero three dash zero five four. Councilman Koch puts this issue forward, there was no changes to our zoning, he asked for input from our community. The primary issue is that our community's on a well-inseptic, and Jefferson Avenue appears to be having some changes with some building of construction. They're looking to subdivide it into multiple lots, and with a street that's single lane passing, two cars cannot pass on that street. You have to pull into someone's driveway to let a car go by. So that area is already stressed, and by adding additional homes, it certainly could stress the well-inseptic that we've been on for well over fifty years. So, the councilman asked for input, and I'm speaking on behalf of several of my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, Taylor?
Next up, we have Adam Rosenblatt.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Rosenblatt. I'm an attorney at Venable Law Firm. I'm testifying on behalf of the owner of the property that's subject to issue three dash fifty-three. This property is located on Joppa Road just east of its intersection with Falls Road. It contains about forty acres of land that is split zone DR one and DR two, and it's the location of the Greenspring Manor Project, which many of you may have heard about. It was subjected to thirteen days of public hearing before the county's administrative law judge, and is set for a fourteenth day later this month. I believe that is a record. The project drew a lot of interest from neighbors near and far, and we are well aware of the neighbor issues after hearing testimony over so many days of hearing. We are opposed to any downzoning of the property, given how far the property is in process, and given that the owner, a Tapco property, has purchased the property with an expectation that it would be developed under its current zoning classification. We do welcome the ability to work with Councilman Koch and his constituents. We're hopeful that the councilman can facilitate discussions that may end in an agreement that would allow for development of the property and addressing of the neighbor concerns. And in the past, Councilman Koch has used CZMP issues as a way to facilitate that kind of compromise, and we just want everyone to know that we're prepared to meet to discuss this matter with any and all interested parties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next up, we have Joseph Manik.
Hello, my name's Joe Manik. I'm speaking on issue three zero one zero. I am the adjoining property owner, and I oppose the change of zoning from RO to BL. The, the change has a permitted use that is really right now unknown. It could be retail, it could be a bank, it could be a bar, it could be a convenience store. The, the entrance to that property is on North Hampton Road, the, which is fifteen feet away from my driveway. It will increase traffic on North Hampton Road that has already increased when the traffic light was put, put on York and Aylesbury, people are shooting up North Hampton to avoid the traffic light. That is one of my concerns, there's, the, the neighborhood has many concerns. Another concern I have is noise, trash, lighting at night, depending on what is put there. I won't be able to enjoy the outside of my property due to all this traffic, lighting, and putting auto traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley?
Next up, we have Brent Howard.
Hello, my name is Brent Howard, representing the Baltimore County Chamber of Commerce. We are in favor of issue three dash zero one seven. We support the rezoning and subsequent redevelopment of the Lutherville Station. The development of Lutherville Station fits into an existing model of activating existing transit-oriented developments, or TODs, as an efficient way to drive growth in a given area and bring new residents, businesses, and tax dollars to our county. Redeveloping existing transit stations like Lutherville Station allows for curated growth strategy to enhance the amenities and offerings for current and future residents. Having, having a long-term strategy for reasonable development within Baltimore County is needed to fund and protect the way of life current Baltimore County residents enjoy while preserving the quality, the quality of life that we all enjoy as a whole. Redeveloping the station is a valuable opportunity to tailor growth and development in a reasoned, sensible style for Baltimore County by syncing central Baltimore County to the existing Maryland rail system and creating another connection to a bustling population base that will only drive growth within our particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Next speaker?
Next up, we have Meriwether Morris.
I would, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. I would like to address the Arcadia Avenue Fire Station in Upper Co., which is zero zero three dash zero zero one, and our concern is that this is a very quiet historical village, and the fire station, out of necessity, was there for many years, but when they moved, we feel that it's more appropriate not to have such an industrial use proposed, as proposed there with the, the current proposal, and we were concerned about what would happen. There are lots of different questions that people have in the community. We're concerned about what would happen to the house next door, which is part of the property, and we're also concerned about water pollution, and just, we would like to keep the quiet character of the village there and not have another industrial use. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Next speaker?
Um, our next speaker is Lee Cochran, but I do not see her signed up on the speaker list, so Lee, if you are here, please send me a message. Our next speaker is then Mary Bogden, Bogden? Mary, you're unmuted.
There seems to be some difficulty here, Taylor.
Okay, we will move on. Sorry, Madam Chair, just trying to find people on the speaker registration list. Um, our next speaker will be Tom Carroll. Um, Tom, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Tom Carroll. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak on issue three dash zero five seven. I am the current president of the Board of Governors at the Baltimore Country Club, and I'm here to request that the Baltimore County Planning Board resist any efforts to downgrade our zoning for our existing property of our club. A downgrade in our zoning would in fact impede our financial status, impede our borrowing practice, limit our growth, and potentially endanger our future. Our stated position is to continue to make our membership and our club more attractive and valuable to the membership, and zoning is obviously a critical element of this. We've been on this site since the early twenties, long before there were any housing developments in our neighborhood. We meet regularly with our neighbors and, and integrate their comments and concerns into our operating philosophy, inclusive of any development plans that the members along Jennifer Road have already helped us shape. We're environmentally responsible neighbors, we're ecologically conscious, we maintain expansive green spaces, which is highly attractive to Baltimore County. Studies show that anywhere between eight and twenty-two percent increase in property values to be adjacent to a first-rate country club, so we're also driving increased sales of homes and tax dollars to Baltimore County. Our current zoning allows us to continue to use our space to serve our members, to add amenities, and to ultimately maintain the viability of the club. We ask that there be no change to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Next speaker?
Um, Mary, are you there now? Is your mic working? Okay, it doesn't seem, oh. Okay, it doesn't seem so, um, so we will move on. Our next speaker is Carl Holland, and you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Carl Holland. I'm a member of the Hanover Road Association here in Baltimore County. I'm here to speak on issue three dash zero zero one, that is the five four one five Arcadia Avenue. The Hanover Road Association Board investigated the CZMP request and believed that the owner of that business could operate on a BL dash CR property. We voted unanimously for that request, and then the community got together and, yeah, the owner got to speak and mentioned that his seventeen thousand pound truck could not be on the property of a zone BL CR. So then the community unanimously voted to allow the BM CR zoning as long as there was a covenant to be written limiting the BM use in the future, if there was a sale or change of ownership. The Hanover Road Association will be meeting again, and we'll have a final recommendation for the planning board of either BL CR or BM CR with covenant by the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Taylor?
Next up, um, we have Thomas Zink.
Great, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom. I'm speaking on issue three zero five six about the Baltimore Country Club. I live in the Mayfair neighborhood, which is directly across from it, off Jennifer Road. I've lived here for six years and previously lived in the Chapel Gate community, which was also located, located across from BCC for ten years before that. The Baltimore Country Club has been a fantastic neighbor and a significant reason we continue to love this geographical area. Many people looking for suburban living seek homes, there are parks, golf clubs, schools, fields, farms, and country clubs, like a lot of things we've heard tonight. These are huge factors in both quality of life and property values. House values in Mayfair, the Oaks, Pebble Creek, Jennifer Ridge, and other surrounding neighborhoods continue to set all-time highs and sell extremely quickly. The Baltimore Country Club's a big reason for this. This is a family country club, not a corporate membership club. Many times, the members are the actual buyers in our neighborhoods, but even non-members obviously love living by a beautiful golf course and club and recognize its value. Our HOA typically includes at least one resident, a BCC member, to keep the communication lines open. The GM and other executives regularly meet with our community to update us on events taking place at their facility. They also have some agreements in place with certain neighbors who are very close to parts of their property about lighting or night hours. Baltimore Country Club's communication and working with neighbors in the community are the benchmarks of cooperation and collaboration that I think we're all striving for in discussions like this. I've heard some concerns as it relates to potential rackets facilities, pickleball court noise, et cetera, but BCC already has pickleball courts and racket noise, and I believe they have agreements in place there. This is about zoning and not potential construction, and I don't want to see you, the Baltimore County Government, do anything to diminish the value of BCC's property, and I can't imagine any other neighbor in that space being as positively impactful to the surrounding community as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Next up, we have Tim Crotroco.
Thank you, Taylor. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Tim Crotroco, and I do represent the Baltimore Country Club, and I'm speaking on issue three dash zero five six and in, in support of the Baltimore Country Club. I wanted to point out that the issue dash, three dash zero five six was not filed by the Baltimore Country Club. The club was unaware that the issue was filed until we saw signs being posted on our property, and we are here to respond to the issue that was filed. As was stated earlier, the Baltimore Country Club has been at this location for the past one hundred years. We own four hundred and five acres in Timonium, and issue three dash zero five six applies to only twenty-seven of the four hundred and five acres that we own. The twenty-seven acres, for the most part, are located on the southeast corner of the property. The application that's been requested is asking that the RC five zoning go to RC five. I understand that it's up for consideration, and I have some information I'd like to share regarding what, what zone the property should really be zoned. It's important to note that the entire four hundred and five acres of the Baltimore Country Club has been approved by a special exception to be used as a country club. Most recently, that, that approval was in case two thousand six oh six five two SPХ. Access to Jennifer Road on the eastern half of the Baltimore Country Club's four hundred and five acres is by way of a driveway that currently leads into our maintenance facility. So we do have a driveway on Jennifer Road at this time. It's also important to note that the Baltimore Country Club, the entire four hundred and five acres, is served by public water and public sewer, which is very unusual for an RC five zone. The two physical connections into the public sewer line are located on Jennifer Road, one of which is in the twenty-seven acres, the subject of tonight's hearing. So we believe, I believe, the appropriate zone for the property is not really RC five, it should really go to a DR zone. All the properties on our border there are all zoned DR zone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crotroco. Next speaker, please, Taylor?
Next up, we have Lisa Viscuso, speaker number fifty-two. Um, okay, we will move on to our next speaker, Chelsea Cashenbach?
Chelsea, you're unmuted. Hello? Okay, I thought you were gonna call me. Okay, sorry, wasn't prepared.
No, you're fine.
Okay. Um, my name is Chelsea. I am here to talk about zoning requests two, six, sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six, of which all I am against. I've lived in the same place on Thornton Mill Road for thirty years. Within that time, I have seen many new changes and the impacts it has on the environment and the surrounding residents. Zoning request six and twenty-six are both located past Hunt Valley on Bridge Brook Road, which is now a business park. Zoning request twenty-six wants to add residential development consistent with DR ten point five. That means a possible two hundred and twenty new dwellings. We do not need more housing or businesses to accommodate these houses like zoning request six wants. Zoning request twenty-five is behind the Kelly Building and wants to put in a possible hundred and fifty-eight dwellings. Zoning request two is off of Thornton Mill Road and wants to put a possible seventeen dwellings. So within less than three miles of each other, there are requests to put in over three hundred and ninety-five new dwellings. Our infrastructure is not equipped for all of the housing or the businesses that these zoning requests are for. Zoning request sixteen, which is the old Delta Hotel, is seeking BM CCC, so it could possibly be turned into another crowded shopping center, which we already have, less than a half a mile away. Uh, all these new houses and businesses are putting an increased strain on our already overworked sewers. Our schools are overcrowded, the traffic is already awful. If you've looked around, I hope you have noticed the amount of litter and trash on the sides of the road. Light pollution is already an issue with the shopping centers and housing developments we have. All of this would cause a disturbance to the environment, including our waterways and our native wildlife, whose homes keep getting destroyed, not to mention the increase in crime that comes with more homes and more business. whose homes keep getting destroyed, not to mention the increase in crime that comes with more homes and more businesses and just more people. If you don't believe me, take a look at Cockeysville within the last twenty years and the increase in criminal activity, and then look at the increase in homes and businesses. When making these important decisions, I urge you to get the community involved and think about the residents like me who have lived in this area. Please respect the environment, and please consider preserving this land for many years to come instead of continuing unnecessary development. Thank you.
Next speaker, please, Taylor?
Next up, we're gonna come back to Lisa Viscuso. Lisa, you're unmuted now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lisa Viscuso, and I'm a resident of District Three in the Cooper Field neighborhood. I'm commenting on issue three dash zero one two. I support the request for change of zoning, but only with the following important reservations. One, the driveway to enter exit the residence be situated on Cooper Field Court or Cooper Road. The zoning request states the vehicular access would be on Cooper Field Court. However, the zoning sign was placed at Cooperstown Court, which is confusing to the community. Cooperstown Court is a more narrow and curved entrance road, not lending well to another driveway, and the added residential, delivery vehicle traffic, and construction equipment traffic, which would diminish the serenity and walking and drive-in safety of Cooperstown Court. Mature trees, shrubs, and grass line the street and would be at risk of damage or removal. The second reservation is that the new residents would abide by the covenants and restrictions of Cooper Field neighborhood when designing, planning, and building the residence, as well as residing in this community, to truly be part of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Bensley?
Next up, we have Christine Turner. Christine, Christine, you're unmuted.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Christine Turner, and I am here in opposition of issue three dash zero zero four, which is the rezoning of two one five two five York Road from RC five to RCC. My husband and I are the homeowners of the property to the north side at two one six oh one York Road. The rezoning of the property in question is at the center of a residential community surrounded by homes and farmlands. There are no other commercial businesses surrounding it, and there is no infrastructure in place for any type of commercial property, commercial infrastructure. There are no sidewalks, no parking. We all share the same aquifer by all of the community members, and our drainage is already taxed with the current infrastructure. As homeowners, we would like to not see any more traffic increasing in our neighborhood. Currently, the road that we share, Old Harris Mill, is a place where my five-year-old rides her bike. We walk our dogs, and the neighbors all know each other. We do share this road, and the deed of our house states that our property extends to the middle of Old Harris Mill Road, so any changes to the other property would not only change the value of our home in a negative way, but it would also change the character of the community of historic homes dating back to eighteen seventy-six. Currently, this is a rural environment with farmland, and we hope that the county will continue protections of our farmlands, the biodiversity, and the ecosystem. Please protect our neighborhood, our neighbors, our investments, and our children. In addition, if there are to be more community changes, we request that infrastructure be put in place before these changes are made. We would like to end by saying that this would only benefit Pat Meadowcroft, not any of the neighbors in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim Turner.
Good evening. My name is Tim Turner. My wife just spoke, and I'm just gonna piggyback on some of the things that she said. Again, we are the homeowner of the two one six oh one York Road and feel that for issue three dash zero zero four, we are in opposition of rezoning. We purchased the property as an agricultural piece of property, so we could have a little bit of homestead. In that time, we've had chicken, ducks, goats, things like that, and I would just like to keep it the rural residential and not turn it into any more commercial property. I feel like the traffic on York Road going up to New Freedom and Shrewsbury is already bad enough. We've spoken with the neighbors surrounding us. I'm not sure if anybody else has joined this meeting, but I know that they have all voiced their concerns as well, and they would be opposed. And I think, you know, for the family, I'd be concerned about just the property values, and, you know, this is a home that we will pass on to our daughter and things like that. I would just like to see it stay the agricultural land. And in that same vein, for issue three dash zero four eight, we would stand with the farmyard and keep all of that property zoned agricultural as well. So thank you for hearing me this evening, and I hope you guys have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Next speaker?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Jenkins. Pamela is speaker number fifty-seven.
I'm Pamela Jenkins, homeowner, Kurtz Avenue, Lutherville. I am against issue number three dash zero one seven. Picture in your mind three buildings, each one the size of Ruxton Towers looming over a historic neighborhood. Picture the results of adding nine hundred more residents to this small community, which lacks the infrastructure to handle such a large population increase. I understand fully that empty buildings need to be renovated or even torn down and rebuilt if necessary. I also understand there is a need for affordable housing. I would argue, however, that changing the zoning for the Lutherville Station property to CCC in combination with proposed bill three dash twenty-four will give the developer carte blanche, causing serious and long-lasting detrimental effects that will plague us for years to come. Our recently restored stream will once again become clogged with trash and debris. Our aging sewers will struggle to handle the growing load of human waste generated by a vastly increased population. Our children, including those of new residents, will suffer the effects of extremely overcrowded schools. Our small neighborhood streets will deteriorate quickly under the strain of increased traffic. People walking in the neighborhood will have even more difficulty safely crossing neighborhood streets. The York Road corridor will become impassable, because let's be realistic here. If Mark Renbaum expected the inhabitants of his proposed four hundred and fifty apartment units to use only mass transit, he certainly would not have included nine hundred parking spaces in the Lutherville Station plan. Renbaum has been painted in the media as an altruistic, forward-thinking person who wants to provide much-needed housing and who has the county's best interests at heart. We would all do well to keep in mind that his primary motivation is to make as much money as possible, no matter what or who he damages in the process. Renbaum and any politicians who have taken his money will be the only winners in this scenario. The losers will be the environment, the children, and the current and future residents of Lutherville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Next speaker, Ms. Taylor?
Next up, we have Carrie Bosley. Carrie, you're unmuted on your four four three five four one number.
Okay, I'm speaking against all the development around the diecraft toxic waste site, especially this one for three dash zero zero two, the one that these Miami Floridians bought our swampland from the Fitch use. It's land that's not there. I'm the Thornton Mill dam keeper. We owned a hundred-year floodplain around there. These people got so land that wasn't theirs. It used to be the roller property, which roller got paid money to have it declare an environmental buffer there. It's just north of the Hunt Valley Mall, the Masonic Mall there, before you get to the Western Run. And there's an illegal truck stop there that they've never put, won't do anything about. The road goes from like five lanes to two there before it crosses the river, and then there's trucks on either side. And it's on top of the river, and it's on top of six transcontinental pipelines that if they blow up, we all blow up. But nobody seems to be, even after nine eleven, they do nothing to stop that illegal truck stop on this property that they want to develop now. And these people on Thornton Mill Road should be more concerned about the Ridge Brook Road, where Jimmy Knott wants to build on top of the most toxic trichlorethylene-contaminated part of the diecraft toxic waste site, which was built by the chairman of the zoning board himself, Harry Dundor, who lived at Broadmead, and Obrak got paid like a million dollars to have the diecraft tooling, you know, diecraft was a tool and die. They have electroplating baths there and full of cadmium, chromium, and degreaser called trichlorethylene, which is a frame chef mutator. And they tried to put, when Sparks Elementary, mysterious, they burned down. Elwood Sensky tried to put this new Sparks Elementary there, and we stopped it, but now...
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Now they have the autistic, they're busting autistic kids to the toxic waste site.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bensley, next speaker, please?
Next?
Yeah, I'm on.
Next, we have Ken Bosley.
Okay, to follow up on zero zero two, that property, they have no access to Thornton Mill Road. They're trying to steal about ten acres from Carrie Bosley, Ken Bosley there, here. So they have no access. Thornton Mill Road has never been dedicated to the government or the county. It's still part of the Thornton Mill Watermill property that goes from York Road to almost Interstate eighty-three. The dam for the watermill is a couple of feet away from Interstate eighty-three, and the couple of maps that I've seen that the county has produced trespass are not consistent and trespass on us, at least five acres, if not ten. The sign was a half mile into our property, almost, and so it was wrongly posted. And it hasn't, it was requested to be changed, and it hasn't been, and the sign poster told us to take the sign down ourselves, so that doesn't make any sense, because I don't know what he's doing, obviously, the contractor or what. Anyway, there is, the sewer line that comes to diecraft goes right through there. It's the Western Run interconnect, or they call it interceptor. So it's about a yard diameter. Plus, there's a bomber gas electric pipeline there that's twenty-four inch, that's a thousand PSI, that's huge. That goes right, on our property, right next to the Fitch, almost to the Fitch, it's not quite. Let's see. So there's no access. Oh, BG&E must have had the power outage. BG&E tried to condemn us for a rider, rideaway a few years back, and so they might have turned off the power to everybody there just so that there wouldn't be opposition. I don't know how Woodhome Homes, it's connected with BG&E somehow, probably, but we might never know. They have not contacted me or anything about that. Some of the previous property owners were really violent in trying to occupy our property there over and over again. We grew in nineteen sixty-six the number one corner there for the real estate fair.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Bensley, next speaker, please?
Next up, we have Lynn Jones.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Yes, good evening. I'm Lynn Jones of Parkton, past president and current board member of the Sparks Glenco Community Planning Council. Several issues that concern Sparks Glenco and myself individually that we are against are numbers three dash zero three seven, exit thirty-three in York Road, number zero four three, two one two one three York Road at four thirty-nine in York Road, and zero forty-eight, two one one five nine Old York Road, the farmyard. It's interesting that all three of these properties are at I eighty-three interchanges. These properties all have something in common. At present, they're undeveloped and are in active agricultural use. Their present zoning is in character with surrounding farmlands within the RC districts of this area. The farmers who work these fields depend on continued use to eke out a living. Every acre farmed is precious. There's limited supply of farmland. I cannot underline that enough. Once farmland is taken out of food production, it will most likely not be returned. Since not one of these landowners or petition issuers have reached out to a community group such as ours, we really have little idea as to what they have in mind for rezoning. We can only guess. One of Sparks Glenco's mission statements, supported by many of our residents in this area, is to protect our agricultural heritage, farmlands, the environment, and waterways. Overdevelopment is not a good fit with this mission. We ask that you, as planning board members, take the time to experience this beautiful area, designated state and county scenic highways, and the all-important food-producing lands that are proposed to be replaced with business major and industrial manufacturing uses. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Taylor, next speaker, please?
Next up, we have Jean Sandvik, speaker number sixty-two. Ms. Sandvik, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Jean Sandvik, and I'm here to speak about, I'm opposed to issue number three dash zero one zero, a rezoning request from an RO residential office to BL. First off, we had sent in a petition with about fifty signatures from residents within just a few blocks of this site. Some of the residents were trying to make it to the meeting this evening, but they may not have been aware of the change to the virtual, so hopefully they're here. Anyway, our property is just adjacent to the rezoning request property. We have a corner lot. We've been in this property and my family since nineteen seventy-nine. Being a corner lot, we have no backyard. Our side yard is what borders the back of the property in question, and that's where we spend our time. This is our privacy area. This is the area that we do for enjoyment, so this will affect our home environment. We don't know what the plans are with the BL. Realize the site can become larger. Right now, it's a small stone house. Being larger, it's gonna affect our sightlines. It'll bring more traffic, brighter lights. It's already difficult making left turns into and out of our street on and off of York Road. My husband had said earlier tonight, his driveway is right next to ours, so it can bring more foot traffic, trash, noise to our home and neighborhood. The zoning change would also, I'm sure, affect our property value. I'm also concerned that the east side of York Road where we are will become more congested with businesses. There are several more ROs within about a two-block radius of our street, and I would imagine that this site would allow changes to the BLs for the others to follow suit, further having a negative effect on our neighborhood. I just really hope that you guys will take this into consideration, and again, I oppose this zoning change, and thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker, please?
Next up, we have Mackenzie Pfeiffer. Mackenzie, you're unmuted on your four one zero nine one three phone number.
Okay, sorry. I didn't realize it went to the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Mackenzie Pfeiffer. I am a longtime resident and grew up in the area. I am here to oppose the zero three zero zero one proposition. My main concerns regard this and what it may do inviting commercial operating business into the area. I understand that there was interest voice from the owner of the business earlier on this evening, where there's a fire department. It is not very active. Most often, we wave in passing, and it's a very quiet historic neighborhood that we would like to maintain that way. I'm interested in understanding why this is being zoned as BM as opposed to BL, and I think there's plenty of discussion to be had surrounding this, but severe concerns just regarding commercial operating that would be occurring here. And I know the operator himself mentioned that neighbors were okay with this and had expressed approval, but I know some of the directly adjacent neighbors really are not and are concerned. So I'm very much hoping that we can learn a bit more about what's going on and take this down the road so that everyone finds something mutually agreeable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Sandy Frank.
Hello?
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my husband and I, Ray, purchased this property.
Hi, my husband and I purchased this property with great hopes to rejuvenate the old Aklo Inn. We fixed it up, abated a beautiful family, family and community restaurant, which has, we're so thankful, it's been very welcomed by the neighbors and the community. We would like to expand the parking to allow our tenant more room for outdoor family operations. We think this area will greatly benefit from the farmer's market area, the large field adjacent from the restaurant.
Ms. Frank, what issue are you speaking on?
3-027.
Thank you so much.
So sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Continue.
Given the growth in this area, potential sport fields bordering our property, we believe we would be a great benefit to the families in our community. The property is bordered by First Fruit Farm, who was in great support, a large solar field, who is also in support, and as mentioned previously, the sports field complex. We do not believe it would be any disrespected, especially a place for families to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Molly Melero. And Molly, you are unmuted on your 443301.
Just finished. You just.
Good evening, members of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm here to speak on issue 3-056. My name is Molly Melero, and I reside at 801 Beaumont Road. I have lived at this address with my family for the past four and a half years. Beaumont Road, but Baltimore Country Club on the south side. I am speaking tonight in support of the Baltimore Country Club. Like the other neighborhoods in Jennifer Ridge and Mayfair, we on Beaumont Road are fortunate to have Baltimore Country Club as our neighbor. Besides the immensely positive impact on our home value, we also have the pleasure of driving through and past the pristine golf courses and meticulous clubs. Our neighborhood experience with BCC has been extremely positive. The general manager and other executives regularly meet with the residents of our community. They keep us advised of events taking place and have been open and actionable to suggestions and considerations put forth. During the trying times of COVID lockdown, BCC Baltimore Country Club unsolicited offered the use of its cart paths to their neighbors, allowing for family walks and a restorative and beautiful setting. Thoughtful, timely, neighborly behavior. Because Baltimore Country Club has proven to be proactive, thoughtful, and responsible neighbors, I fully support that Baltimore Country Club keeps its current zoning the same zoning of the community surrounding it. Thank you for this opportunity to voice Mike's support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Jeff Myers.
Hi, my name is Jeff Myers. I live in Timonium, and I'm testifying on issue 3-014. I oppose the rezoning requested by the applicant Stella Maris. Stella Maris, AKA Catholic Charities, wants to rezone 38 acres of RC4 land to DR16. That is a huge increase in density, especially for an area so close to the Lockraven Reservoir. Lawyers for Stella Maris say this rezoning is not for expansion. A Greater Timonium Community Council representative asked them about the request and was told, well, if the building gets burned down or something, we don't want to have to get rezoned in order to rebuild. If that were truly the case, only the property around the existing nursing home and senior apartments would need to be included in the request. Much more acreage than that is included in the request. Something is out of sync here. From the last ZZMP cycle, we know that Catholic Charities wants to raise money by developing its land in this area. Such development should be done in accordance with existing zoning, or the development plan should be revealed before rezoning is permitted. At 16 units per acre, 38 acres would hold over 600 units. The statements made in this meeting by Stella Maris's lawyers, who may not be privy to their client's ultimate plans, will not be binding or of any legal effect if the rezoning is made to DR16. Catholic Charities does great work that I support, but even it should not be given the right to put 16 units per acre on these 38 acres of RC4 land. If God forbid, they ever need to rebuild the existing buildings, the community would be behind it. This rezoning would allow to sell off 10 or 15 acres of DR16 land to a real estate developer. That should not be supported. I thank the board members for your service. Whatever the county is paying you, it isn't enough.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Mary Brunk.
Good evening. My name is Mary Brunk. I am speaking on behalf of my husband and myself concerning issue 3-056. My husband and I are homeowners of 22 years in the Jennifer Ridge community, directly across the street from Baltimore Country Club. I am speaking today in support of Baltimore Country Club. We are very fortunate to have BCC as a neighbor for many reasons, but of greatest importance to us is the positive impact the club has on our property values. The properties in our community are highly sought after, very attractive to prospective buyers, and sell very quickly when listed on the market. BCC has been part of this community for 100-plus years, in contrast to most of the neighboring communities that were built in the last 35 years or less. The irony here is that the property all of our homes are built on was once open farmland or forest. In closing, it is very important to allow BCC to maintain their existing zoning so that they may continue to be successful and therefore a neighbor for another 100 years. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Wayne Bender.
Good evening. Thank you for having me on this evening. I'm a resident of Parkton, Maryland, and I'm here to voice my opposition to issue 3-003, which is to increase the business zoning at 21307 York Road. The businesses that we have out here affect us, as everybody knows that lives in a rural area, water. I have no idea how big the business is going to be. We have no idea what the business is going to be, but we do know that they're going to need water. How much, for how long, is going to affect the residents and the neighbors in this area? The quality of water also being affected as they drill, whoever. And then, of course, the quality of life out here, and again, not knowing the type of business they bring to the area, leaves a big question mark and uncertainty for the residents. Of course, I'm concerned about wildlife and the effect that they're going to have on that. So, in ending, I just wish they'd be more explicit on what's being built. And we've already experienced very quickly illegal burning, burning paddling in the back, illegal dumping of turning into a dump. So we're watching the area. I just wish this wouldn't go through. Very simple reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Jeff Peyton.
And this, I'm a resident in the area under consideration. This encompasses parts of Goodman's Boulevard, Jefferson Avenue, Madison Avenue, and Van Buren Lane. And looking at the zoning request, the existing zoning area is exactly the same as the requested zoning area. So there is no difference. It was very confusing to us. One of our neighbors called in earlier and mentioned the same thing, but he apparently got information about this request that it might be having to do something with subdividing the parcels. We don't know where he got that information, so we're requesting that, where can we find this information? Because we called the zoning office today, we also called Councilman Koch's office, and no one could tell us anything more about this zoning request. All it said was to facilitate discussion. So we'd love to talk about it and learn about it. We just don't know where to get this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton.
Next up, we have Stephen Simon.
Yes, am I good now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. So my name is Steve Simon. I'm a private citizen and have resided in the Hunt Valley Sparks area for over 30 years.
Guess we can wait.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Simon, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I strongly oppose the rezoning request 3-002 by Woodhome Farms, a Miami, Florida-based developer. This request is related to the rezoning of a plot of land along the Western Run River from RC6 to RC5. I oppose the rezoning for three primary reasons. One, the preservation of the area's rural character. The development facilitated by rezoning would be incompatible with the area's rural character, which is currently preserved by its RC6 zoning. This beautiful river valley is home to many species of wildlife whose habitat would be negatively impacted by any significant development. Two, is safety. Access to this property would be available only via Thornton Mill Road, a winding, unlined country road that already supports a high level of traffic. And the third reason would be runoff water quality. The topography of this plot of land will direct all runoff into the Western Run River, which is a primary tributary of the Lockraven Reservoir. This river is already under considerable stress due to new development around the Hunt Valley Mall. I believe the rezoning of this land would be at odds with the county's overall goals for conservation, safety, and maintaining the quality of life for its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Carrie Pfeifer.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I'm here to oppose the request for the upgrade in zoning from two RC2 parcels in the historic village of Arcadia. It's issue 3-001. The two RC2 parcels are comprised of several tax IDs. The Henover Association, the new owner went to them, and they are requesting to change it to commercial BM or BL or CR. I don't understand if that someone wants to, if he wants to park a vehicle there that weighs 17,000 pounds, why to go to such a huge jump in upgrading to commercial on two parcels. The other concern I have is that the CR, based on the square footage of the building and what is allowed in the CR, his building there exceeds that. So, and also in the request, it talks about the high usage, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week of the commercial, heavy commercial use. That does not depict the picture of what our lovely town is. Our post office closes at noon till 1 o'clock for lunch. It's the type of community where there's baby strollers, dog walking, everyone's waving to each other. And not to mention what could happen to our home values by putting a commercial business there. They also recommend putting covenants in there so that when it transfers hands, that it would, I guess, go back to the original use. But that doesn't address any concerns if they were to lease the building to someone else. So there's just a lot of questions that the community does want answers to and better understanding before this type of decisions made.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeifer.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ms. Pfeifer, are you with Ronald Lowry? I see that you guys were signed up together, but I don't see him on the list.
Yes, but he had an urgent matter that he cannot speak, but he will write a letter in.
No problem.
And be at the next.
Make sure we didn't miss him.
Thank you for asking.
Sure. Our next speaker is Ronnie Wexler.
Ronnie, I am, they mute you. We have no control over.
Ronnie, you are unmuted.
Ronnie, I think it's you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, we moved to Pebble Creek about a year and a half, two years ago. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to 3506.
Baltimore Country Club.
Baltimore Country Club. Hello?
We hear you, Ronnie.
Okay, all right. So we moved here about a year and a half, two years ago. We love having Baltimore Country Club across the street. There are deer and fox and everything running through. It's beautiful. And we love the personality of the whole location. We know that Baltimore Country Club would love to put pickleball courts across the street, as well as possibly a clubhouse with a bar and other racket facilities, including paddle with lights late at night. Our master bedroom faces that area, as well as other people along Jennifer Road and Pebble Creek. All the master bedrooms on that side of the property face Jennifer Road, and thus, because they're on the second floor, overlook that parcel of land. So selfishly, that would be detrimental to us and would definitely interfere with sleep cycles and everything else. But more importantly, it feels as if it would change the personality of the area from a lovely residential area to something quite commercial, especially if a restaurant or a bar is allowed at Baltimore Country Club. I will give you that there's never been any issue. The people that belong there are quite nice. I play tennis over there. But when you have lights late at night and you have a restaurant with noise, possibly music.
Thank you, Ms. Wexler. We appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next up, we have Stephen Galasso. You're unmuted on your 443271 number.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm speaking on issue 3-028. My name is Stephen Galasso. I have owned a parcel of land on Falls Road, known as 10905 through 10911 Falls Road for 18 years. I also reside in Lutherville as well, and I have for the last 25 years. All my kids went to the Baltimore County Schools. We feel that a community-based zoning would be more advantageous for this 1.65 parcel of land, BLR, CB, something in that nature. The area on the south end of Falls Road has been growing rapidly in my 18 years that I've been there. Our growing community needs some type of commercial businesses to support that south end. We have a large building that's about 5,000 square feet, and we propose a feed store equine based business at that building. We also propose professional offices in the 10911 structure. We've spoken with many neighbors and community members, and we feel that this would be a great fit for our neighborhood. I look forward to this property being an asset to our highly growing community. I thank you all for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Paul Merritt. He is speaker number 76.
Paul Merritt.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Paul Merritt. I'm the president of the Henover Road Association. The Henover Association is in rural western Baltimore County. I'm here to speak on issue 3-001, the old Arcadia Fire Hall, the previous home of the Upper Cove Volunteer Fire Company. Our association- Our association voted to support the proposed change to BMCR only if a mutual covenant agreement can be made with the petitioner. If a covenant agreement cannot be made or the petitioner's claim that BLCR would restrict his use of the property for his public service business, our support will be for BLCR only. The Henover Road Association and the community have been forced to work with the leftover properties from the merger of the Boring Volunteer Fire Company and the Upper Co Volunteer Fire Company, which resulted in a move to a new location. Properties left from the merger and the move were originally supported by the community for a special exception for a fire department on RC two land. Any repurpose of the Arcadia Fire Department should fit the character of the village of Arcadia and not be burdensome to the neighboring community. Once being the center of the community and existing from community donations, the community should have the greatest influence on the future of the subject property related to issue three dash zero zero one. I ask that if anyone out there has any input for the Henover Road Association, please reach out to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Richard Kincaid.
Hello?
Richard, you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Richard Kincaid, speaking opposing to zoning three dash zero zero three. The biggest issue I have with that is A, the lack of information of what it's going to become, B, the current noise and light coming from the property, and the insufficient road in front of it to handle any increased traffic. It is currently a bypass between Shrewsbury to exit four thirty-nine. And at times, the traffic is unbearable. I've already had numerous cars wind up in my backyard, my back property. The number of poles currently down alongside the road that need to be repaired again. The speed on that road is not currently be able to be maintained. So, I mean, if it could be better described and planned, would be nice. And a buffer zone for the noise and light. That's why I really have, against that proposition.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Our next speakers are Colin Dean, followed by Sheila Dorsey. I don't see either of those on the list, so if either of you are here. Sheila Dorsey, oh, perfect. Sheila is here.
Thank you, Taylor.
Okay, great. Sheila, you are able to unmute now.
Thank you very much for letting me speak on this issue. I'm opposing issue three dash zero two seven, the reclassification of six point two seven acres at two zero four one eight Middletown Road from an RC two to a BL. It's not that we oppose the business itself that's up there. Mind you, it is in my backyard. We moved up here approximately five years ago and purchased a large plot of land, built a house. We came up here because we were wanting to get away from, and sorry, not meaning to offend anyone, but we wanted to get away from the Jacksonville area that was developing way too much. So we moved further north. The small little commercial businesses that are on Middletown Road, located at two zero two three one, two zero two three four, and two zero two three five, the liquor store, the mechanic shop, and a small restaurant that's a carryout only, not dine-in, are basically neighbors to themselves. This location for two zero four one eight, sitting on seven acres, while I appreciate that they want to expand and expand their parking lot to accommodate more persons, Middletown Road is already a, it's become a catastrophe with not only commercial traffic, tractor trailers that really should not be on this road, violations of speed limits, more accidents that have increased over the past two years since we've been here. And I can't fathom Middletown Road handling and increase of persons coming to a restaurant slash bar and being able to avoid traffic jams and just quite a nightmare that's directly across the street from First Fruits, which is basically a work for nonprofit. This isn't just, this isn't a revitalization. This is a farming and residential community. Nothing needed to be revitalized. I think that the county would be prudent on looking into what this would seem like for a study on traffic and how big they're looking to expand before just making a decision to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Passas. Next speaker, please, Ms. Bensley.
Next up, we have Colin Dean.
Hi, yeah, this is Colin Dean. I am opposed to three dash zero two five, which would be upzoning just west of York Road in Sparks. As a Sparks resident, three dash zero two five would lead to further overcrowding of schools, overcrowding of the York Road corridor, infrastructure stressors. This is, would increase environmental concerns for the watershed due to the topography of the property. This would directly drain off into the Thornton Mills Road area, which was previously mentioned by Ty Young, Carrie Williams, Judd Jenny. Piggybacking on what Chelsea earlier testified to, this three dash zero two five would be upwards of one hundred and fifty-eight houses, which would be directly adjacent to a recently approved four-story assisted living facility and fifty-two, fifty-five-plus-year-old homes, plus the three dash zero two six, just a mile up the road, which is proposed for increased housing density. So again, this would really change the character of the area and would really crowd the schools and the intersections of northern Baltimore County and the York Road corridor.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Patrick Smith.
Hey, good evening. I'm, you guys see me? Yeah. Good evening, I'm Patrick Smith, the president of the Delaney Valley Improvement Association. We represent about six hundred and thirty houses in the Delaney Valley area from north of Beltway to south of Seminary Road. So the issues we have at hand here are numerous. And first, we'll start off with three zero two three as a proposal for the Eber Plaza Eighth Green Ridge Road or thirteen oh one York Road property to be upzoned to a BL with a CCC for three hundred or more units. I've met with the developer on several occasions here. The developer is interested in initially two structures, then one ten-story structure. So we'll come back to that. The community association, or the Delaney Valley Improvement Association opposes three dash zero two three. We also oppose three dash zero three zero, which is similar in scope. It's a mixed-use apartment complex proposal. I met with the developer's representatives on that matter. And once again, another three hundred units. The schools are overcrowded. As I said earlier, the elementary school is at seven hundred and fifty students. State-rated capacity is six hundred and seventy students. Traffic intersections in the area are all D-rated intersections, some failing intersections locally. So we just can't handle the, you know, increase in residents in the area. We just don't have the adequate public facilities for that. Also, on issue three dash zero five one, we would like to request that.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Bensley, next speaker.
Our next and final speaker for the evening is Iain D. You are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there, my name is Iain Day. I'm a resident of Sparks. I'm in opposition to the zone change request three hyphen zero zero two. Some excellent opinions have already been given by my neighbors already from an environmental and nature preservation standpoint. My short statement will mainly highlight the concerns and response to the potential increased traffic and development to the area should a zone change occur. I am a physician specializing in sleep medicine, and I would like to highlight various studies approved by the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, which is the main sleep medicine organization in the USA. I am a member of this. There is a strong link between light pollution and reduction in quality of life as well as increased mortality. Studies have shown an association between light pollution and increased hypnotic medications for insomnia due to the effect of light on quality of sleep. This is also in addition to worsening mental health conditions and pain syndromes and their associated medications with their side effects. Think opioid epidemic and potential worsening. Therefore, medication treatments go up. In addition to this, there are the concerns for general health concerns such as traffic causing air pollution, risk of respiratory illnesses. So I do implore that you think about your residents when it comes to their health with the increased light pollution. Baltimore County has one of the best school districts, and there are clear studies showing the effect of light pollution on school-aged children, especially teenagers' health because of their disrupted sleep rhythm, which naturally occurs. I do understand there are other issues to this debate, but I do please request that the committee research these issues for the health and safety of their constituents. If you have any further information, I believe my detail is out there. You can contact me. I'd be happy to give more information.
Thank you, sir.
On medicine. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. And this concludes the CZMP hearing for District Three. If you have any written testimony you'd like to send us, you can send it in care of the Planning Department, in care of the Planning Board, to the Baltimore County Planning Department. I really want to thank the planning staff for shuffling at the last minute today from an in-person meeting to a online meeting. You did an excellent job. I want to thank all of you that attended and for your cooperation and respect. Have a good evening, and we will take your oral and written testimony into consideration. The planning, the council will hold its own public hearings in June, and they are required by code to vote on the new zoning map before September sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Thank you again. Have a good evening.